We have public comment and we have somebody on remotely, I understand. A public comment. Okay, go ahead. You're recognized.
Rebecca Lieberman, 50 Pratt Street. Can you hear me?
Yep, you can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I would like to ask why. Thank you. I'd like to ask why can't more RMLD programs be opt out rather than opt in? For example, at every new hookup or renovation, residents, customers could be offered the 50% renewable choice option. I learned from RMLD a couple of days ago that only 100 of 30,000 customers are enrolled in this renewable choice program. And I'm sure there are other people like me who used to be a part of the former program. I think it was called Green Choice, which went away and I didn't even realize it. So there could be outreach to those customers. Or what about taking advantage of economies of scale for the renewable choice? Instead of charging 100 participants approximately $20 each, why not charge every customer 25 cents each? You'd still come out ahead. And I also wondered why programs like, why everyone doesn't get a time of use meter at the time of new hookups? Because doesn't it actually cost RMLD less to to have residents using power at off-peak times? And that way, everybody could automatically, like, you could automatically price, shred the peak time use higher. It's really, it's just too hard to take advantage of the existing RMLD programs. And clearly, with only 100 of 30,000 customers, people aren't taking advantage of these. And if we're going to meet our needs, and full disclosure, I'm part of the climate advisory group. Where we had the kickoff yesterday. And another thing that Maine has done with great success in getting Maine residents to convert to heat pumps and heat pump water heaters is they are giving the rebates at the time of purchase. And it would be great if we could partner with Joann's and other places and other stores to do something like that. So those, I just, maybe you guys have other ideas, but we need to do something to expand 100 out of 30,000. That's, that's really shamefully low at a time. Everybody needs to be meeting, heading towards net zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that under advisement.
And we'll cover many of those topics tonight.
Okay, very good.
But good, good, good feedback in terms of how it looks like from a customer perspective.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I know that I'm in the program, the, I think I'm in solar one and two, you know? $10 off my billies time, with the amount of uses I have, it always covers my costs, you know? So, I mean, it's a great program, you know? We do need to do more publicity and get the word out more. And we've talked about that before in this committee, so, but it's a good, good input. I thank you. Participant for bringing these things to our attention. Okay, next one we got is the minutes, the meeting minutes. Official mover, minute mover, motion mover.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the September 28th, 2023 open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board's Secretary.
Second.
Is that second? I do want to make a note on this because I reviewed this. I did have to structure a little bit as to the fact that was, I was not present. That my plane did not come, didn't take off one time. I was sitting in a, in a Guadi. Because my plane got delayed coming back. And I did have to kind of clean up, I did kind of note that Mr. Talbot took over as our secretary during the meeting. And then at some point, Commissioner Bittit took over later on. And then after we had once said Mr. Talbot excused himself to leave.
Which, which meeting was this?
This was the September meeting. Okay, all right, so just want to make that note, okay? It's been moved second for the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries five zero. Policy review, Greg.
Perfect. So three, over almost three years ago, we put together Policy 30. It was in the context of what has become the 2021 Climate Law. We actually, there's a lot of work and discussion around that. It was actually passed. We did a revision, approved a revision one and a revision two before the law actually came into, was officially signed in the following month. But we had a pretty good idea of what it was all about. And in our practice, right, we try and review our policies at least every three years. And so, in the context of us looking at our retirement targets, and it's almost three years, we decided to revise and clean up Policy 30. So you have in your package, and we started talking about this at the December meeting as well. And we wanted to make sure that all of the commissioners are here before we made any final decisions relative to it. There are two, what we basically have done is we're going to talk about Policy 30 here. And then, as you will see, the targets for retirement of certificates. We are, we are making a proposal that we put that in part, as a component of Policy 19. And specifically, as opposed to putting a number in place, because we will propose a number in the board, in the presentation here in a few moments. But we wanted to get the procedure completed first before we made the recommendation for the 2024 annual retirement. So all said and done, big picture, we streamlined noteworthy chunks of the policies. We have over 30 policies. They overlap each other in certain areas. And so, preamble is and stuff, this kind of background context, we want to delete. Areas where there are responsibilities of the different parties, whether it's the Board of Commissioners in particular, and that's covered in the Policy 19. So we're trying to move everything into Policy 19. So there's one place where all of the responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners are, which is what we're proposing here. So there's a, there's a lot of refinement to it. The other addition to this that we added was to make it very clear that RMLD as a policy is supportive of the Commonwealth's goal for greenhouse gas emission targets as well as non-carbon targets. So those are the main choices, are the main pieces of it. And then the one other thing that I want to draw your attention to, which is in the back part of your package, if you would go actually to the Policy 19, just service on the same page. This is not a formal presentation of Policy 19. We will probably do that in two meetings. But we wanted to let you know where we plan to put the responsibility of the board relative to setting targets. And if you scroll down to the bottom where it says power supply, scroll right down there, great. You'll see that it says the Board of Commissioners approves long, so this is pretty consistent with what's already in there, but approves long-term power supply contracts and agreement unless otherwise voted through strategic risk mitigation plans such as.
You're talking about here, I'm on the, I'm signing on.
I'm on the
What pages might be on the laptop?
I'm going to say it's probably eight pages down. It looks like so much aware.
You're talking about 19?
Yeah.
You got what page that is?
I don't have a page.
Yeah, seven.
So if we scroll down, 39 if you're looking at that.
Okay.
So in the power supply piece, again, the Board of Commissioners, you as a Board of Commissioners approves long-term power supply contracts and agreements unless otherwise voted through strategic risk mitigation like the TFA, which we aren't currently, that platform isn't placed, but given the nature of the market, it hasn't, it's not, it's not effective given the nature of the market. It was designed at a time when the market wasn't quite as volatile. But what we added there, and approves annual certificate retirement targets. So in the, in the policy, the responsibility, and it was written in the original one on section F, the General Manager may retain or may market certificates as he or she deems to be in the best interest of RMLD and in compliance with all applicable law. And then we added, and Policy 19. So what we basically structured is that it's the General Manager's responsibility to come back to the Board of Commissioners on annual basis. Besides the quarterly reports that we do in terms of certificate retirements, sales, et cetera, but to come back on annual basis and make a recommendation. This is what we think the target should be for certificate retirements for the course of the year. We're looking to you to basically approve a target for the year. We'll manage the monthly or the quarterly ups and downs, et cetera. We just thought that that was a, was a clean, simple way to structure. Having you have the authority to approve the target, but the RMLD through the Office of the General Manager has the responsibility on annual basis to propose a target. And that's actually what I want to do tonight, because you'll see later in the presentation, we're going to make a recommendation to set a different target than we are currently on path to. That's so, so just on Policy 30, streamlined, cleaned up. But the additions are adding the responsibility of the board to approve on annual basis retirement targets. And then that we are supportive of the Commonwealth's goal. Those are the big picture pieces. There's a lot of little stuff, but that's the big picture. Questions?
I go, just, I think we've gone over this before. The word renewable slash versus non-carbon. You know, you took renewable out and you inserted non-carbon.
Correct.
You know, here we are later on in the presentation, you talk about geotherm, you know, a proposal of, of, of an energy producing that's burning gas, right?
Correct.
So we're conflicting with ourselves with non-carbon. So, so I guess, but I don't want to pigeonhole us at the non-carbon renewable, right? It's, someone could say, well, it's not, it's, you know, something that could be good, that's better than what we have today, than what we're doing today, right? So let's either hyphenate it, renewable, non-carbon, or I, I don't like the choice. I, I don't like the, just striking out one as, as an option, because you don't know what's, what can become. No one could do a very great, and you come up with a high efficiency something, I, who knows?
So here's the thought process. So what did come out? So the reason why I mentioned the context that the bill was actually signed after we put the original policy in place. And at that point in time, renewable, renewable certificates was the right metric. As the, as the bill was finalized, the metric that we are held to is a non-carbon. So whether it's renewable or, or emissions free, I mean, that's why in, we've, we've been in the habit for the past two years, maybe three now, of calling them certificates as opposed to RECs. Because RECs is a subset of certificates. And as you'll see in the rest of the announcement, I'm just making sure I understand the question and give you the answer. Then I understand the question, but the metric is non-carbon. It's a little bit more comprehensive. It's a non-carbon target. It's not to say that everything we do is 100% non-carbon. And renewable fits under non-carbon as far as the state, because it's a compliance obligation. As far as the state's concerned, renewable is a, is also non-carbon. Does that answer my?
To some extent, because then you defined, you defined in the, in the, later on, you defined other things as sources and then you kind of went in there.
We're trying to keep ourselves flexible, right?
Right, right. I just don't want to limit to what the, that word renewable, because, you know, a lot of people love, love being lawyers, right? So I, I just want to make sure that, that.
Just to make sure I follow you, I thought we could basically replace most of the places where it was renewable with non-carbon. Are you looking to replace where it says renewable, or you want to add renewable back in?
I want to add, put renewable slash non-carbon back in. And if you're saying it's a subset of non-carbon.
As far as the state's concerned.
Well, it's a subset, but I guess in our, our policy, you know, I know, but words are important, I think, sometimes. And I, I just think if you hyphenate it, I'd be happy with the hyphen, that, that's all. Or slash, or whatever, you know, just putting two together.
Non-carbon is more inclusive than renewable, so it does include more things than.
Sometimes somebody says that, you know, when I say, you know, renewable energy source or a better energy source might be something that's carbon capturing, right?
So our carbon capture stuff will fit underneath this. When I, when I say that, this, so the metric, this is real helpful to make sure we're on the same page. The metric that we are held to from a compliance obligation in the 2021 Climate Law is a non-carbon target. It's a non-carbon metric. It has nothing to do with the inbound fuel source. So whether it's natural gas, oil, coal, or whatever. The issue is, is the output, well, as far as it's with the states themselves. Now, the state can change stuff, and of course they will. So we want to keep ourselves flexible. And, and what you're going to see also in section F is that as laws change, it's the General Manager's responsibility to come back to you guys, report, hey, there's a, there's a change. And hence, we got to change the policy. So I'm supposed to, this office is supposed to monitor that kind of stuff. I'm with you, I think, in the intent of what you're saying. But I, I, this, this non-carbon is, is the broader umbrella. And I think if we put renewable in, it, it, it restricts the flexibility that I think you're trying to encourage us to have.
That's, that's correct. It's a, it's a flexibility issue. But if non-carbon is the umbrella, under the umbrella. I'm okay.
That's good classification.
Other item, jerk was, again, moving the, if we're going to move that portion to.
Policy 19?
Yeah.
Yep. Well, we didn't move it actually, because it doesn't even, it didn't exist anywhere. The way it was originally written is that the General Manager had the authority to retire. So we, what I basically proposed is that I'm putting restrictions on it, that I need to have approval from you in terms of what the annual targets.
Right, because we, we had the discussion two meetings ago, you know, what the, what the rate of retirement is and, and when, you know? It's, it's, it's an important structure, you know, are we going to do a balanced flow? Or do you want to do it, you know, be impactful today? And I think we all agree that we're going to do a balance.
Yeah.
Over time.
And because the value of certificate, because the, as we get closer to the 50%, well, as the, as we get closer to the state mandated 2030 target of 50%. And as we keep moving our, you know, as we get closer to it with ours, the dollar magnitude of the decisions that we make are becoming more significant. As opposed to being, I won't say rounding error historically, but now, now it's making a difference. Which is also one of the reasons why we report quarterly. But more importantly, that whatever we do for the annual target, like, we're going to lay, like, we're going to, you'll see it. We're going to lay out, here's the economic impact. Bill and his team have walked through, here's the, here's the impact in terms of the different numbers. But I think the other comment, Bob, is keeping the non-carbon, it's given us some flexibility as opposed to doing renewables. So whether it's FX or clean energy certificates, there's a whole bunch of different categories underneath it. And we walked through those at the last one, and we'll talk about them very briefly. But I think the way we have this structured allows us to be, to be ahead of, to give ourselves the flexibility to be ahead of the compliant curve, yet give the flexibility in terms of how we do that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Are we talking about the line edits on Policy 30, or are we talking about, because we, you started talking about Policy 19?
Well, don't, we're talking, so what we want you to vote on is the policy edits on, on the, the line edits on Policy 30. But what I wanted you to understand is that we are, are adding, or we will be adding to with your approval, probably in two, two sessions, a change to Policy 19 that will add the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners to approve.
The RECs?
Well, the certificate.
Certificates.
The certificate, the targets for the annual targets, not the individual ones, but the annual targets. Like, we want to be at 30% or 40% or 20%, whatever number this year, that's where we want to be. So I'm going to, the General Manager's office is going to make the presentation to you.
Okay.
And you're going to say, yeah, maybe, well, not maybe, you're going to say, yeah, or anything.
So because if I'm not mistaken, the only thing that establishes whether we have non-carbon power supply is whether we do or don't retire the certificates.
That's, that is what, that defines if we are compliant or not, exactly right.
Well, it, it defines whether we have, right, whether we have power supply that can be characterized as being non-carbon is purely a function of whether we do or don't retire certificates, right?
Yes.
Well, then, that.
From a, from a compliance.
But that should be integral to Policy 30, because, you know, it's the only thing that, that determines whether we do or don't have a certain percentage of non-carbon in our power supply. So it's, it's like, it's the whole ball, in many ways, it's the whole ballgame.
I think the objective here in adding the Policy 19 reference is Policy 19 with edits that are likely in the future going to be proposed.
Right.
Gives us the opportunity to set a target and approve that target as a board instead of just having the General Manager have the direction on that. So adding Policy 19 gives us the ability to impact the rate of retirement.
Yep.
Right, but I just.
You're making a different point, Dave, aren't you?
No, I'm not. I'm making a point that if we're, if we're, if we're updating policies about this critical topic, that I would suggest that all of these cohesive edits should be in front of us at one time. And that.
And that's the intent.
Yeah, yeah. Right, but just, just proving a policy about our non-carbon and greenhouse gas reduction and not having, if we're going to do something in the future that, that where, where, that sets out how we determine RECs sales, sorry, certificate sales, of which RECs are apart. Certificates for the people, the cheap seats like me, took me 10 years to understand this. I'm almost there, almost. Is that certificates are for renewable power, but also nuclear.
Correct.
Right, and maybe other things.
Yep.
Right now, we, we sell everything but the nuclear, we sell the, everything but the nuclear certificates. So this, this defines, right, this defines how much, when we report to the public and to the state, what our level of non-carbon is, it is a function of our decisions about RECs sales.
But from a state perspective, it's their definition of, their definition of certificates of what we retire. So they're on the same page in terms of retirements is the only definite, so, so they've already set the compliance obligation. And they basically say, here's how we measure it, and here's the targets. So, so that's already established in the state law.
And Dave, we, we, we know what we're purchasing. We're purchasing, our energy supply comes with RECs, right? So we don't, we don't.
I just feel like, I guess I just feel like it really is the only, the only thing that determines whether our power supply is a certain percentage of non-carbon is whether we have retired the RECs. Sorry, certificates of which RECs are apart. So that I feel like our policy in this area should be saying that what, this point about what we're going to do later, about whether, how much certificates we sell and which ones we sell should be integral to, as I read this now, is, should be integral to Policy 30, not just something we do as a footnote later. Or, or that we have both of them together in front of us, and we can understand how they interact. Because it would be good for, for us to, I just have this at one sitting and have the all, and it's related to this topic in one vote.
I have no problem with that comment. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to make sure I understand, Dave, is this, from a compliance perspective, in terms of whether we say we are non-carbon energy or not.
Yep.
Is, is a metric that is designed outside of this body. It's, it's, it's a, so it used to be a market defined, but it's now a state legislative defined metric that, that we could say whatever we want, but, and we can make any sort of internal policy we want. But in terms of, of the, you know, for, from a public presentation perspective.
Yep.
And I think we're going to solve the underlying problem as we, as we retire more and more certificates as opposed to sell. And we're going to make a pretty bold proposal here in a few minutes.
Okay.
But I, I guess what I'm hesitant to do is to add a definition that's already decided, that's already defined by the regulatory body to which we have to report. I don't, I don't, I would, since it's already defined what that metric is, let's use that, that metric. That's, that's what I'm suggesting, as opposed to putting it in here.
There's two points to the changes. One is just making sure we are full, consistent compliance from a definition standpoint to the law that we are trying to abide by.
That's very clear in here.
That's the non-carbon element. And then the second small piece is adding and Policy 19, which represents the approach that we take.
That will reference, because it's not in there now.
Correct.
And that's a good point, yeah.
Policy 19 is in the, in the packet.
Right.
And lays out how those targets are set. In the future, we may modify Policy 19 when it's brought to us. And then at that point, we wouldn't have to revise Policy 30. Or we could leave Policy 19 the way it is.
Right. I mean, we could, we could, we could try and put it in here. I have no problem putting it in here. But, you know, our goal is to try and our policies are, are overlapping internally and consistent and overly complicated, to be blunt.
True.
Okay, good. So what we're in the process of doing amongst all the other things is just trying to, to make it more clear so we can follow the policies we have in place. And so the recommendation is to put the responsive, so in the Policy 19, which is the board's responsibility, that's the board's responsibility. But inherent to that is that the General Manager needs to propose, or the General Manager's office needs to propose the certificate retirement target for the year to you guys. And your responsibility is to approve or prompt for another analysis or edit, or whatever we want to do. But we now, with, with the way Policy 30 is written here in front of us, Dave, is it, it adds an obligation of the General Manager Office to check in with the Board of Commissioners annually in terms of what that target should be.
Okay.
And that's, and I think that's appropriate. Back to your point, which is, again, the General Manager's Office reports at the pleasure of the board. And as you mentioned, this is an, this is an increasingly important target from an environmental perspective, but also from a financial perspective. So I think it's, it's important for all of us that we stay tightly connected.
All right, great. And is it the two line edits, the two, two quick things on the line edits? One is, why is F, the old F deleted? Why is it that we're not saying we may vote on changes to this policy?
So, because it's in, we can vote on, it is inherent, right?
Yeah.
You, you guys are the Board of Commissioners, right? You can say, I want to do X, Y, or Z, so. It's redundant. I mean, I think we'll let, we'll put it, it states the obvious, yeah. We'll end up putting it on Policy 19, but you guys have, again, you guys have the responsibility to policies.
Then the only thing I would suggest on this as written is that in the little box here.
Yeah.
It lists a bunch of things. I think it's enough to say that RMLD will explore other generation technologies that are compliant with the state law, period. Because they may change in the future. And I don't, these would seem to need more definition of, like, hydrogen system. I don't know what that means, I mean.
Yeah, that came from a recommendation from the C A B. So as your recommendation on that one, that are compliant. We can delete the rest, we can delete, so we can.
I'll just delete it after the, after the law.
Reference to the law?
Yeah.
Okay, so delete including carbon capture fuel cell, hydrogen system, low temperature geothermal, just delete all that.
Yeah.
Can we put that up on there, so I can see what?
Because I mean, hydrogen system is not a generation technology. It doesn't really mean anything.
It, it, right. It's a placeholder to say, we're going to look at it.
Yeah, let's get, let's get the wording up there.
Yep. Right before.
Sorry, sources? Yeah, so just after, there, just put a period after 11 F3 slash four, and then leave it, the rest.
And then I have one other.
And delete the rest.
Start to leave, yeah, delete. Okay, and then if I may request one last edit, okay? If you could go to E on the second page. So again, I'm trying to be very diligent to remove, to broaden it. But in the third sentence, may market RECs instead of RECs, if they replace that with certificates. The same, yes, give it broad, because otherwise, same, I did catch it before, my apologies.
You put it in different color, Erica. Does, we can actually see.
Should turn, should turn, should turn.
I will accept that as part of the main motion, if everybody agrees. Okay. Okay. Make the motion, please.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Policy 30, renewable and greenhouse gas GHG reduction regarding power supply procurement revision two as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
As amended, you could be friendly amendment.
Well, I accept it as part of the main amendment. I'll accept those changes as part of the main amendment.
Okay.
So noted, okay? Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries five zero. What?
I, I did. We need to reread it again for the record.
Come on, Erica. Stay with the flow here, come on.
I don't know, kidding aside, if we want to reread it to be legal.
I'll do it again. Move the RMLD Board of Commissioners, oh, sorry. Move the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Policy 30, renewable and greenhouse gas GHG production regarding power supply procurement revision two as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
Great. Okay. Let's move to second, so.
We got a voting.
Want to vote again?
Let's do it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And vote again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm remiss in the fact we have Ray here today, and I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself here. Okay? Go ahead. We got a mic, so. So we can just begin the meeting, so.
So those at home can hear. Ray Porter, currently Chair of the Climate Advisory Committee, and on the ballot for the Redding Light Board of Commissioners, so vote early, vote often.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray. Let's move on to item number five.
Okay, Phil.
She'll circle the presentation up here.
So I'll go quickly. A lot of this will look very familiar from when we approved the rates. We have good news as far as the rate increase goes. So so our rate design, right, is bound to pass through our, our costs. Some of the costs are, are related to, you know, running the operation, and others are related to fuel. are related to, uh, you know, running the operation and others are related to fuel. Um, we, uh, we still, um, compare well against our I O U, uh, counterparts, uh, so people that live in our service territory are benefiting from the public power model. Um, these are the new, uh, updated rates, um, so it is, uh, we do have slightly lower increases based on the, um, the, the tariff that was approved, uh, last fall. Um, so it basically is a three point two percent, um, higher that is lower than what was, what was approved. Um, and for residential customers, it's going to be just a two percent increase. Um, again, we're only affecting, um, the, the rates that are highlighted out of all of our, uh, tariffs shown here. Um, and this is the breakdown that we showed before. So this is, uh, and I'll go into more detail on the, um, on the, uh, the certificates in the next, uh, presentation, but, uh, this is if we were to retain, uh, stay on the current policy or the previous policy to stay at, to retire thirty-two percent of the recs uh, that we purchase. Um, so at this rate, you know, the, basically the tariff rate charges are staying the same based on your vote, but the, the, the price forward curves on fuel have gone down. That's good news. Um, the volatility is less than what we were expecting. There are, there is, uh, it's been warmer weather across the country, not necessarily here, but, but in other parts of the country, so that is, uh, has, uh, had, uh, uh, an ameliorating effect on, on prices. Um, so, we, you know, the, the power supply cost will only go up, um, by point one six percent. So it's instead of where we were, um, over three percent. And then if we.
I want to, I want to leave, yeah, I want to leave that last slide till after you do the, do.
Okay, yeah. I can do that. And I can't advance.
You can't advance anyways. But just, so, um, just to be real clear, back in October, we approved, we approved those, um, rates and the rates, what we didn't approve because it's built into the existing rate structure. You didn't approve power supply. So power supply is passed through and that, that rate's already in place, so we didn't make any changes to power supply. So the rates, which were the customer charge and distribution energy charge, those we approved last October. And we didn't make any changes to those. Um, and so what we're basically doing is with the presentation here is ju, and we'll publish this data now because the rates would take effect March first. But it'll give customers an idea of what they expect their monthly bills to be relative to twenty twenty-three. So net, net, each rate class is a little bit different and each, each monthly bill is maybe different depending upon the actual kilowatt hours, but we've been pretty consistent over the past several years of using the average residential rate as just a placeholder as a, as a reference, which is just over eight hundred, um, kilowatt hours a month, sometimes a combination of the tariff rates that Bill explained plus the power supply forecast, the best of our ability. Net, net, it's a pretty minimal increase, which is good news for our customers. Now the fun stuff.
Now to talk about certificates. So, um, as, you know, we had discussion before, that there are a lot of different types of certificates that uh, allow us to comply with the climate legislation, um, and they're all, you know, they comply with the legislation because they help us get where we, uh, need to be as far as greenhouse gas. Um, the, uh, these slides are very similar to our, what we're in our previous discussion, except um, we've got another pricing point here. Uh, this year, we, um, you may remember, we have the hydro Quebec, um, a contract starting this year, so that started this month. Um, so we are getting, um, clean, uh, energy uh, standard certificates as a, a part of that contract and those are pricing at a little over eight dollars right now, so they're higher than the, um, the emission free energy certificates that, um, uh, that we get from other large hydro and, and nuclear plants. And they, they, they have more value, which is good news too. Um, so this is the chart maybe you'd be the most interested in. I know we talked about like what is the, um, the trade-off between retiring more recs and what is the impact on costs? So you can, what we've tried to do here is show, uh, through the curve, the impact on, uh, the, the average residential customer's bill, uh, based on a certain level of rec retirement. So, um, if we are at the, uh, at the low end, um, uh, you know, if we're at thirty-two percent, obviously it has a, a very minor impact and that was the rate impact that I showed you, which would be the sixteen cent, um, uh, or point one six percent increase. Um, if we retire all of the effects, um, that's, uh, would be a twenty-three cent impact on each, uh, the average bill. Um, and if we go to, if we then, uh, retire all of the, uh, clean energy standard, uh, certificates, that would be forty-six cents. So together it would be a, uh, a sixty-nine cent, uh, impact on, on bills. Um, and then, you know, if, if we were to go, the reason we stopped there is we could get to the twenty-third, we could exceed twenty thirty compliance now, um, at a, at a nominal cost to, to customers. Um, so we'll, it, we'll accelerate our compliance and then we, we, we still have, uh, the revenue from those certificates, but if, you know, if we're, if we wanted to go to seventy percent retirement, the impact would be greater. It would be about a, uh, five dollar impact on, uh, on each customer's bill. Um, so our recommendation is to go to fifty-five percent because we think that has the best balance between retiring more and advancing our compliance and, um, and having less of an impact on, on. So that is our. Yeah. So that's it. And then I'll go back to.
Yeah, wait, why don't you show the, if you can bring him back to the other.
Yeah. Let's show the impact on the overall rate of that.
The last slide he put together on the rates is the recommendation, like if we go to fifty-five percent.
Yeah.
This is what an, an average monthly bill difference would look.
Yeah, so it goes up by ninety-one cents. That's the, um, you know, sixty-nine cents plus the, uh, the blatant impact based on the, on the fuel charges, the power supply.
So the recommendation here is we're going to go from thirty-two to thirty-five or what are we going to?
Thirty-two to fifty-five.
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 Just.
So we will be at beyond the twenty thirty target legislation now in twenty twenty-four.
Incremental cost to a customer is roughly sixty-nine, seventy cents a bill. I mean, I'm.
We're going to retire fifty-five percent of the certificates.
Correct.
Effects, okay.
Yeah, including effects. It'll be primarily effects and.
Sure, nuclear.
And C E.
Be all over nuclear.
And hydro.
And it'll be hydro Quebec deal that we did. They now, you know, there's a lot of benefits to it, so it, it created those C E Cs, C E C dashes, the clean energy certificates for existing. So it, it allows us to be much more aggressive than we have been on the past and, and a minimal incremental impact to a customer, not zero. Um, but we think it's a good comp, oh, not compromise, we think it's great, but, sorry, we think it's good.
Yes.
I, I just want to make one comment. Um, the Financial Accounting Standard Board has a project, a project out there where they're going to actually require you to present the value of certificates on your balance sheet at some point.
Oh, that we're holding?
Yes, that you hold them in a given time.
But we, we dispense with them, uh.
Right, but you may have some that you hold at year end.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to have a year on carry.
They may have. Be presented on the, in your, in your financial statements.
Yeah, but whatever it's done, it, but.
Exactly. It's going to get into what gets mentioned. I mean, that's, it'll be interesting.
So, that, that kind of leads into what I was saying. So, Ted, you know, current present value today, you, you mentioned, we're going to have some, we're going to be sitting on some valuable recs coming up.
Well, well, we'll continue to. The portfolio.
Our, our portfolio was very robust at the, at the moment.
It, yeah, it, and, and, you know, between now and twenty thirty-three, thirty-four, um, and we got some contracts that come off, but, but the effects and the hydro, actually hydro Quebec ends in twenty twenty-nine and then we have, and then we have the option to extend that one. So between now and twenty twenty-nine, um, we could keep this level with no incremental cost to a customer, if we, I mean, if we decide to. But go ahead, I think your question is the right one.
So.
Cool for twenty twenty-four, but what about twenty twenty-six?
Right, right. Why, why retire, increase our retirement now when it could be more financially beneficial to Reading Light to do it at a later date?
Yeah.
We, we, we discussed doing it at a very balanced approach
Yep.
to keep that rate increase down, right? And stay on par. But, you know, we're achieving a higher number. Okay, but it's not necessary. Legislation dictates that we want to be at this mark at this state. We went, we agreed to go on a linear path. Financially, we're, we're giving up a financial gain for, but at Reading Light by doing it early. I think we're, you know, you're potentially selling something earlier that's worth more later.
Yeah, but we, we feel that the, the, the recs that we're selling are the least valuable and the incremental, um, benefit is, you know, the incremental cost.
Well, we're, we're increasing our rate that we, you know, we said we're going to do a three percent, uh, you know, increase per year. So, okay, we, we go up a little bit higher, right?
Thank you. Yeah, so I want to, I think that's the, just to answer.
Yeah, I, you know.
It's a good, it's a right question.
Our fiduciary responsibility is to maximize our, you know, we, we, we're sitting on a, a profit and, and we're.
So just, so then to, not to, again, you guys make the, make the decision, but, so what we're talking about here is, um, so the, the, the effects, um, are not very valuable in terms of dollars, right? And they don't trade very, you know, there's not a big market for it. The next level, which is that blue level that Bill pointed out, is the C E C dashes. Um, those are trading in the seven to eight dollar range right now. Um, and, and there's a question, and, you know, all these markets are driven by what's happening on, on state by state regulatory changes in terms of what the value, um, you know, main class two has went from two dollars and fifty cents to twelve dollars and have now settled back to, I don't know, even the previous chart, eight dollars. But it's driven by, um, somewhat market, but it's driven more by regulatory changes. So, so in terms of the context, in this particular case, um, so we'll go and look at what happens in twenty five, six, seven, and eight and make a recommendation, but, you know, there's a scenario where we are, we go to fifty-five percent this year. Um, and then we stay there for two, three, four, five, six years potentially. Well, we can go, we can go, we can go all the way to twenty forty if we want, right? Because the next compliance target's not till twenty forty. But the trade-off that we're making, um, is that forty-six cents per customer per bill. So just to give you an order of magnitude in terms of, you're asking the right question, not trying to give you some background data in terms of, 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 and I, we should probably, next time we'll have the, the, the certificate model in front of us, but, um, it, well, we can, we can do it fairly quickly. That, the dollars that we're trading are, not to say that they're insignificant, um, they, they, the class one and the class two certificates are significantly more valuable in the high thirty dollar per certificate range as opposed to eight dollar per certificate range. So we're, you know, our recommendation is not to commit ourselves yet, except for renewable choice, back to Rebecca's comment, and we'll make that more broad. But we think that this is a, a balanced, fairly balanced to say that we can, we can claim more in terms of certificate retirements, because again, as you say, we have no, no responsibility until twenty, we have no compliance obligation until twenty thirty from a state perspective. But in terms of what we're setting here as policy, which is the responsibility you guys have in front of you, is how we look at that forty-six cents. Um, we, we were surprised, I think I, you know, we, I speak with you guys on a regular basis and I think I'd shared that that number was probably closer to, you know, a dollar, a dollar nineteen, depending upon, you know, all the different analyses and, and when we put the, when we went back and looked at the model with the C E C, that number ended up being smaller. Um, so whether we're at fifty percent at thirty-seven cents or fifty percent, fifty-five percent at sixty-nine, that difference there is what, thirty, thirty-two cents incremental per month. Um, I think you're asking the right question and, and our recommendation is, is that from a financial perspective, um, it, it, it works fine to do fifty-five, but if the board wants to do fifty, we're okay there. We can go back to thirty-two as well. The reason we don't think, we think we should at least go to, you can see that little two in the chart there, step two, but we think we should at least retire all of our effects, because the reality is we'll be hard pressed to, to monetize that anyways. So instead of doing thirty-two percent, we might as well do forty-seven percent. Because we, we, we just won't be able to realize the value, so we might as well retire them, because if we don't retire them,
Yeah.
we'll be hard pressed to sell them. If we don't sell them, we forfeit them and that's, we don't want to do that. So, you know, we could, we, you know, step two or step three are, are the recommendations. Um, well, and then we should probably, the, the next step, put a bullet where the, there, anyways, in hindsight, just maybe it's review of following. But we should, we should just retire all of the effects, which brings to the forty-seven percent. Um, because that twenty-three percent is, is a little bit, it's not very marketable. Um, so what we're really talking about is the difference between thirty-seven cents, sixty-nine cents to go from fifty to fifty-five. From a recommendation perspective, does that help you guys? I think the chart's actually pretty good, so.
Yeah, it's, um, just for transparency, I fully support this recommendation. Um, I think as we think about our mission, reliable, low-cost, non-carbon, nothing.
Got that across.
Nothing is more.
You should have that up here on the wall.
Three elements of that than this kind of recommendation. You know, we're, we're keeping the, the level of reliability of the current, uh, power supply portfolio. We are keeping costs low. We are, remain very competitive. This is a very, you know, any increase is important for us to consider, but it's uh, extremely limited and lower than we, what we anticipated even with this change back in October when we voted. Um, and it moves us, you know, markedly towards that end stage complete non-carbon target that we have to meet eventually. I would love to have us explore how we create value from the fact that if the board votes this way, that we will have achieved the goal, the twenty thirty goal early from a, you know, from a Commonwealth standpoint.
Oh, we will market the heck out of it.
What kind of investments would we have access to in funding, grants and things like that, that, that our leadership is positioned potentially, right?
And, and on that note, two things, just to, just to add some additional food for thought. Um, we are in, we are just, you know, we are having lots of conversations with legislators and the Commonwealth, a lot of different departments. And we do, part of the reason why we added into policy thirty, um, that is our, is a policy, I mean, we're doing it, but to make it clear that being point to a policy, we are, we are supportive and we are doing, we are taking action to help the Commonwealth hit its goals. Um, and so we'll, and we'll, if we do this, depending upon what we decide to do, we will definitely do some, we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll make some noise about it. Um, but I think the other thing, you know, going back to, to, to Bob's question, we are in a, we are in a, um, I won't say a low point, but as Bill mentioned earlier, right, the, you know, our powers, the energy market is still very volatile, right? And it is tied to air temperature specifically, but weather. And right now, the forecast for twenty twenty-four is a fairly mild, well, certainly a, a mild winter for the rest of it and mild into, into December of twenty twenty-four to the best of the ability of people to predict weather. Um, there'll be a question in terms of how hot does it get in the summertime? And last summer, we had a, a fairly mild overcast, unlike the rest of the country, which is particularly warm. What, where I'm going with my comment is, you know, that might make sense just in terms of thinking about the recommendation that we do fifty percent. You know, we, that we, that, that we make the motion for fifty percent as opposed to the fifty-five, which gives us a little bit of flexibility. So, nobody's, I say this, well, I'll say, you know, just public, right? Whether it's fifty or fifty-five from a Commonwealth perspective, you know, every little bit's good, but it, it doesn't, it does not a lot of incremental value. Um, it's going to be great for us to say that we are, we are already from a retirement perspective of certificates, we are at the twenty thirty target. And we can say that with legitimacy because we will retire them. Um, and that's got a lot of, I think there's a lot of value to that for a whole bunch of reasons. Um, so you, you know, but just for continued discussion, um, you know, just kind of thinking about you know, Bob's comment, there, it won't stay mild forever, right? You know, there is nothing but upward pressure. When I say mild, there is, there is continuous upward pressure on energy prices, right? And we are, so twenty twenty-four, you know, we are in a favorable position in terms of how our power supply is structured. We're going to manage it very well. But there's not a lot of downward pressure, it's upward pressure. So, you know, if we make a commitment to be fifty-five and in twenty twenty-five, now power supply is significantly more expensive, which is not crazy. Um, you know, then that thirty-three cents or that thirty-two cents, um, is, I won't say it's any, it's, you know, percentage wise, it'll be less significant, but that's just not the food for thought for us to think about. So whether you do, our recommendation is to do at least fifty, um, you know, just kind of thinking about the discussion we have tonight, fifty-five would be great. You know, there's, again, if there's more discussion on fifty versus fifty five. I think fifty, fifty is very logical given where we are, Bob, in terms of the power supply. It gives, we got lots of flexibility. Bill and I had another discussion, we, we're, we're working on, again, we have to pay, work on power supply, but we're working out another structure. Where we have even more flexibility for twenty five through twenty nine in terms of being able to retire certificates that don't have a lot of value. So, so I, I think for the next five years, you know, whether it's fifty or fifty five, we should, we should do that instead of the thirty two. That's our recommendation. And I think it's, it hits all the three targets that we talk about. Anyways, that's the recommendation. Makes sense?
I just want to understand, so the difference between the fifty and the fifty five percent is almost negligible from your perspective?
It's thirty two cents.
Thirty two cent, right?
A month per average bill. I always say it's negligible.
What are the cons?
Out of, out of, out of a hundred and fifty dollars.
One of the significant cons from your perspective of doing the fifty five. Bob says we'd be losing money because it'd be more valuable later.
Potentially, yeah. Well, it's not. But I understand the, I understand the effects, right? The effects wipe them out, that, because it's the right thing. Right, right, the effects put you at fifty.
I guess, I guess it's forty seven.
Like going to fifty five in your.
To answer the question. We have to, we have to, we have to transact all of our certificates. By June fifteenth of the following year. So we have to do something with it. We can't, we can't bank them. We gotta, you know, we turn it to cash, you know, back to, back to Bob's point. And that cash, and we, and we transact, we, we, we transact through fuel or our energy account. Which is appropriate from the per county laws. So if we were to take that thirty two cents per average monthly bill and, and basically, that would allow us basically to. Sell those certificates, basically take that thirty two cents and, and keep the monthly bill by thirty two cents a month. Now, out of a hundred and fifty dollars, it's not a big number, but, and again, it's not for me to judge. So the cons really are purely economic at this point in time. We have a, we have a very, we're in a really good position relative to our certificate portfolio. We have lots of flexibility. So I'm not worried about running out of certificates or having to go to the open market and buy class ones. And even if, you know, no matter, I shouldn't say no matter what, that's an overly statement, but we have lots of class ones too. And we keep adding more class ones with the, with the contracts that we've done. So is there any cons to do fifty versus fifty five? No, it's an economic decision to be honest. And, yeah, that's, that's, there's no obvious cons. And we are in a position where, you know, next year, I mean, I don't think it's in, it's highly improbable. That the G M office will recommend going backwards, right? Which is going back to, I think Bob's concerned. But I don't, I don't envision that just given the portfolio certificates, because we can see after certificates. We can, we can see out five years easy. So the answer is purely thirty two cents a month.
I don't have a problem with this. I think it's great if we can exceed our targets. I think it's long overdue, quite frankly. Thank you for putting it forward.
Team effort. I mean, it's, it's a team effort all the way around, so.
So I wait for all the commissioners to speak. I think Bob brings up some interesting points, but I, I have to agree with Pam. I mean, I, I totally support this. I don't think it's a major increase. Looking at twenty three cents, it's not a major increase, you know, for what we're doing with the environment, you know? So I'm, I'm fully supporting the fifty five percent at this point. So, matter of fact, I would consider in the motion that we add in after the words annual certificate retirement plan of fifty five percent. So we put it in the motion. So we have it in the motion.
Now, it might be, I, I don't know if it's, that could be the variable number.
In the motion, so people know that, you know, what we, we know what it is.
The only important thing to remember is that as our load goes up, the percent of the certificates stay fixed essentially. But the percent will go down. So, you know, there, there might be, that might be the rationale to not put a number.
Up to fifty five percent? Because I'd actually like to get the number in the motion. We'd like to get a, a number in the motion. Yeah.
I agree with you, Phil.
Yeah. So how could, how, you mean?
I disagree with that. I, go, go, the motion is, we, we came up with the number, we voted, okay, go forward. Like, I, again, Phil, and, yeah, I'm kind of disagreeing with, but. We'll make it work.
So can we put in there up to fifty five percent? It gives you enough flexibility.
Well, sure, you can put, instead of as presented, replace it with up to fifty five percent. That's what you'd put in there.
Can I ask though, if the load changes, it could, this could actually translate to more than fifty five percent.
The load goes down.
Right?
Yeah.
So again, I, I'm, I thought on this one, as presented and what you're presenting as a, a scenario.
Well. So, so I think the recommendation, so at the end of the day, the load, you know, we have a pretty good idea what load's going to be, but, you know, we can't predict the future. So what we're, you know, what we, and what the law, what the, the compliance law says, it's a target of fifty, of whatever. So in twenty thirty, it is fifty five percent of retail sales. So we will know at the end of the year what our retail sales are. We will then basically say is the number fifty or fifty five percent. We will then retire, but we will, you know, have an idea of it. So we, we do this on a quarterly basis. But we will, we will hit the, we will hit the percentage target. And the percentage target is just like the state measures it. So it'll be either fifty or fifty five percent. We can say up to, but if you say up to fifty five percent. Well, we can say that and then, you know, we, we report back every quarter. So we'll let you know, here's where we are and we're on a track to hit fifty five, or we're on a track to hit fifty. If we think that, that the world's changed massively in the second half of the year, we'll say, hey, the target's going to be fifty. We'll keep you posted on what we're doing. But I think up to fifty five is, that gives us flexibility. I'm okay with that.
All right. So, any further discretion? Somebody want to read the motion at this point?
Uh, so what am, am I reading?
Instead of as presented, you're going to say up to fifty five percent of retail sales, of annual retail sale. It is of annual retail sales.
Okay. Move that the R L D Board of Commissioners contingent on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board approved the twenty twenty four annual certificate retirement rate.
Up to fifty five percent of annual retail sales.
Retail sales on the recommendation of the General Manager.
You're good with that? Okay. Okay, and move second, further discussion. See then, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I was gonna lose anyway.
Let the, let the record show that motion carries five zero.
Four and a half.
I do hope we have the publicity department.
Yeah.
Market this.
Oh, we're already got some. Nice job. It's good.
Acknowledge the, the team that's put us in a position to make a decision like that.
This goes back several years to be able to be in this position, so.
That's Greg, Greg and Chuck.
Speaking of marketing, we need to get Julie back.
Get what?
We need to get Julie Buckley back.
You want that?
Get Julie back.
Yes.
To the meetings.
Well, we're going to talk a little about that too. Yeah, there's a lot, so in the general manager update, there's discussion on communication stuff, so yes. We're actually doing, you'll see there, it's, we gotta get more, but.
That's your own meeting.
That's not, yeah, exactly right.
Let's move on to item seven.
Okay. This presentation, I'm going to only hit three slides. And the real emphasis of this is pretty straightforward. As you guys know from the strategy discussions. We are moving down the path of in territory generation. Right, so we have solar right now, about nine point two megawatts, but we don't any of it. We, the R M L D does not own any of those assets. So for a whole bunch of reasons we talked about before, it's in our best interest as R M L D from a reliability and cost. And a non-carbon perspective to own generation assets. Storage assets are part of the mix, they're part of the portfolio. There's a slide in here that talks about all the stuff that's going on. We are anticipating a little bit over ten megawatts of additional storage being added to our system before the end of this year, which is all good stuff. Those assets, however, the energy storage assets, it, our view is that the. Those are not appropriate for us to own currently, because there's a, there's still a lot of technology evolution tied to those. But generation assets for the most part are pretty straightforward improvement, et cetera. So, we've talked before about our load growing and we anticipate it to double. Our load forecasts are consistent with work that Iceland New England has been, been doing over the past several years. They have a twenty fifty transmission forecast, they have a twenty twenty three, what they call self-report. All said and done, our load forecast is roughly a compound annual growth rate of roughly two and a half percent. The self-report's two point three percent, the transmission is almost, the transmission net asset, they look at it on a megawatt basis opposed to megawatt hour. But it's a hundred and thirty seven percent, so it's, it's a little bit high, it's a two point seven, two point eight. So we're, our load forecast, while it's not perfect, is pretty consistent with, with the regions looking at as well. Our intention is to put that in territory generation in place. And, you know, so this, on the right hand side of that chart. Is energy to be contracted, so that, that top line is basically the load forecast between twenty twenty one and twenty fifty. That's roughly the two point five compound annual growth rate of roughly twenty, two X. All the colored bars are contracts, existing contracts. We continue to pursue additional solar and additional wind and additional hydro. You guys remember, two and a half years ago, we made a big push to add hydro. Some of those contracts fall off again, so we're going to continue to keep that hydro at a higher mix. Nuclear, we already made it, you know, we might add a little bit, we're trying to balance between Seabrook and Millstone. But we don't expect, you know, we're roughly just under a third, we think that's a pretty good portfolio balance. But we have a lot of work to do to be that, to fill that contracted piece, you know, to be contracted. And we can do that real time or day ahead market, we don't, that's not a, you know, we'll do that in the ten percent range, which is the open position. But new contracts and in territory generation, that's C and D are the two pieces. And the big focus for us right now, it's the big focus, and important focus for us is in territory generation. So that we are trying to do. Then the question becomes, what, what do we fill in? So, you know, some of the discussions you've had over the past several months, you know, what else did you guys look at? We have engaged a, a third party to do a technical assessment of carbon capture fuel cell. We'll talk about that at the next meeting, but we wanted you to walk through all the different things that we're thinking about for in territory generation options. So hydrogen is really a storage device, it's not really a generation device. But interestingly enough, over the past three weeks, a local, another local hydrogen electrolyzer company is trying to move into the area. So we're having ongoing discussions to actually take on somewhere between one and two megawatts of load. To handle their business coming into our territory, which is good. But again, it's early in the market, early in the game, so hydrogen is really not a solution for us until mid twenty thirties. We already talked about our nuclear portfolio, but any sort of nuclear inside of our territory, whether it's small, an S M R, small nuclear reactor or anything else. Is highly unlikely to be in our territory. It's just not going to happen. Where we have wind projects already spread across the region, we'll do more wind projects. But a wind tower inside of our territory, not going to happen. So, so again, all viable stuff, part of the portfolio, but if we're trying to put something inside of our territory for all the other reasons we mentioned in the past. Those don't work. Solar works. We talked about solar before, so we've been doing solar for, well, since twenty ten technically, but. Twenty fifteen and all the way through twenty twenty seven, we're going to do as much as we possibly can. And I'm not going to walk through the slide, but you'll see a little more detailed data. We're about nine point two megawatts right now. By the time we get to twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, we'll max out at forty megawatts. And the reason we'll max out is there's no more open space. Solar is wonderful, but it takes horizontal space and that's something that we don't have in our territory. So we'll max out, but as we talked about before, it'll be less than our ten, it'll be less than ten percent. If we max out at forty megawatts, it'll, it'll generate under ten percent of our load currently and our load's going to double. So we'll do it and it's good, but it doesn't move the needle. In the lower part of that, we talked about low temperature geothermal, we're continuing to research on that, we've been researching it for a year and a half. It is, it is not yet commercially viable. The reason why we think it's interesting, we talked before, we can't go out, we can't go broad because there's no land, we can't go into the sky. For a whole bunch of reasons, there'll be no wind towers. The only direction we can go is down. We're sitting on a big piece of granite, so we're looking at low temperature geothermal. Everybody knows a little about geothermal from a, from a home perspective, we're thinking about a larger scale version of general electricity. So we still think that ultimately, that's, there's a solution there that would work well for us, but it's still out, it's down the road. And we need to do things now, which is why that middle block of carbon capture fuel cells. So what I just wanted to walk you through is, we've looked at a bunch of things, we continue to look. And I don't walk through all these details, but all those projects continue. But this is the slide I wanted to end up on for this particular session. And this is, for that goal, so again, back to the goal of reducing CO two emissions, you know, supporting the, this is slide seventeen. This is, I'm not sure if you can, on the iPad, I'm sorry. But this basically, twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four is our actual CO two output. And that's again tied to our retirement. And so based on the decision today, it'll have a little bit of a jump down. And then the rest of it is, you know, what we need to, a steady state to hit, you know, net zero by twenty fifty. We're looking at this carbon capture fuel cell as being a bridge technology. It does use natural gas. But again, the metrics that we're focused on is the output and the output is CO two. And so if we put CO, and we're, we're going to basically come back with, with more specific recommendations and then ask for approval to move forward at the next meeting. But I wanted to keep you guys up to date in terms of the things that you asked us to look at and how we still, as we keep looking at this. And we're being very cautious on this, we honestly are. But in terms of looking at the portfolio, things that we can do in the context of our mission of keeping the lights on, reliable, low cost. Making your bills affordable and being non-carbon, this fits in the portfolio. And the way we're looking at this, it's a fifteen year project. As you can see here, it would, it would generate basically, if we didn't, if we didn't do that. We would be foregoing basically a forty percent annual reduction of carbon emitted each year. So all the comment behind here is just, we're going to keep pushing on this because we don't have a lot of options and we need to do something. So that's kind of the big picture. We could talk more offline about all the other background, that slide deck is pretty. It can stand alone, doesn't have to be presented, there's a lot of text up on the front. The other element that continues, and we talked about this back in the September meeting, which was a summary of the NEPA meeting. But Iceland New England, you know, Gordon Benwilly, who is the CEO of Iceland New England. The, the, the concept of what they call energy adequacy, we call being fragile. But the regional network is becoming more fragile. And so, you know, while we are not grid or ever source or unitel or liberty. We need to do something and we think that we're in a, you know, an envy, I say envy, an, an ideal position to, to take some action now. That will take care of our rate payers, but also provide examples for other people to learn around us. Well, that's. The rest of it is standalone stuff, so that's just a quick snapshot in terms of where we are, we're continuing to dig deep into a bunch of different technologies. But that carbon capture fuel cell is, it has legs, despite the fact that it has natural gas as input. Any questions? So just a quick update.
Just thinking about. Recognizing you guys will continue to come back and provide more updates. Opportunities for us to kind of get a little bit closer to the technology or see similar types of.
Good point. Yeah. So next steps, yeah, thank you for the prompt. So next step, so as I mentioned, we're doing a third party review, we'll report back on that. We're digging a little bit deeper into the updated economics, the whole, the whole program. We're having a series of follow up meetings with different Commonwealth representatives. Legislators, regulators, different departments, and we're trying to make sure that, that we have their support. And from the perspective of not only this project, but the other projects we're trying to do, like Maple Metals, for example. We are, we have uncovered a sizable carbon capture grant that we're going to apply for this spring. We're working on acquiring land. There is an opportunity, so the carbon capture technology that we think is going to be the logical thing to bolt onto the fuel cell. Fuel cell technology is pretty established. If you want to see a fuel cell, that, that's pretty easy to do. There's systems throughout New England, in fact. Uh, there's systems throughout um, uh New England, in fact, uh, Ken's pretty familiar with them, uh from his previous work, he has them at, or he helped get them installed at uh. At his previous employer, we can see a larger-scale system in Connecticut, that's for the fuel cell. For the carbon capture, um they're actually working technology right now in New York City, so we're in the process of arranging a, a trip down there, we would like to extend that offer to the, to the group of you guys to come and see it as well. We'd wanna see it as well for a part of our due diligence, um but that'll, that'll be part of it, and then on the twenty-eighth, we'll come back with a more formal presentation, so sometime in the. Second or third month, so when's the tentative schedule for New York?
Second week of February, first week, first half of March.
So Erica, as you guys know, Erica is awesome in terms of coordinating all of us, um, so.
Where is it in New York?
Uh, they're, they have several, but they're in, in uh large buildings.
Oh, they're like.
In boiler rooms, yeah, yeah.
So you'll be, yeah, I, I don't always wish buildings, but it's Manhattan, yeah, it's Manhattan. Okay. Have we got a, uh, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Can go to uh GM goals. Oh, yeah. Erica, I've got a bit of two hours on this meeting. We're not doing it for time, we're, we're trying to cover stuff legitimately. Um, I, uh, one of my responsibilities to you guys is to, is to propose the goals on an annual basis. Uh, we'll need to do a, a per twenty twenty-three performance review as well, but at least to kind of get started, so you, this is in your package. Um, it is a structure that I think worked pretty well for twenty twenty-three, so this is twenty twenty-four, um, you know, it's called the GM goals, but the reality is, um. The GM has a, you know, we're a group of ninety people that are trying to get stuff done, so, so this is the broader direction for the overall organization, but things that I. Um, am, am focused on to make sure that we get them this year. So there's, there's the vision, right, we put together the strategic plan, um but, you know, the emphasis in twenty twenty-four is gonna be on territory, in-territory assets. And obviously, whatever we decide to do on carbon, on, on carbon capture fuel cells as an example, so we're actually moving forward on that. Uh, we've already started to engage more deeply the legislative side. We had talked a couple of years ago about you all as being elected officials to be part of that legislative interaction, so we're gonna try and schedule that as well as we get further down the road. Um, we've talked before in that second category of team and personnel, right, this is about the team to get the stuff, it's the, it's. One of the most important responsibilities that I have is in the general manager role. Um, I've got some key hires to make, uh, we, I'll, I'll talk about some of that in the GM update in a few minutes. Uh, we do have uh union contracts um expiring at the end of twenty twenty-four, so this summer will be a contract negotiator, this spring and summer. Um, and then we're also looking at, uh, we're trying to get a better um performance feedback, and maybe, and maybe we're gonna play around with three sixty-degree feedback stuff, show up please. On the customer side, uh, we had put in place a weatherization, so big picture, um, uh, we have a very strong incentive program. Uh, based on the feedback we got from Rebecca, we need to do even more to let people know uh the incentives we have. But the weatherization incentive we put in place last year, we're gonna, we're going to expand that um this year. She mentioned the concept of uh time of use, um, we are in the process of doing, so in order to do that, we need an A M I. A meter, so we're in the process of doing, it's in the capital budget, um, but it'll be a, it'll be two year, two to three years before it's fully rolled out. But that will be a, an A M I, so that's a big project that needs to get done this year. There'll be more communication stuff in terms of web and mobile web and mobile app, again, we'll talk about communications in a few minutes. And then, uh, you know, there's a, there's a lot of leadership change um at the town manager level and both Wilmington and Town of Reading. We've got a really good relationship with all the towns, but, you know, just keep making it better and better. Uh, on the platform, um, you know, more data analytics, uh, we're actually, you know, one of the recruits that we're doing right now is uh adding some more horsepower to uh. To Bill's team, and so some of the, the people are very strong in data analytics, and this is a data-driven, it's a physical infrastructure place, but it's becoming more and more data, not a surprise to you. Um, funding, real important piece, right, so we are in a good financial perspective, but given the growth that we wanna do in terms of asset acquisition, it's gonna require significant funds, so. One of the goals this year is to put in place, and there'll be a lot of updates, particularly as we get into the summertime, in terms of how we're going to do bonding, we are gonna end up in that mode, given the magnitude. Of, of the investments we need to make, um and again, we keep chasing down grant opportunities, and so we're doing that not just by submitting grants, but also. Um, you know, making the, both at the state level and the federal level, um, trying to make more noise, you know, back to the value. We're doing all of these, you know, we're the innovative place that you wanna test things out, so that's beginning to get legs. And then we've talked about the power supply piece, but I think the, the key driver there is not only in-territory generation on the utility scale. But also the school, uh, we played around with Burbank, that didn't prove to be the right location, for a whole bunch of things, we're still chasing down the schools, in particular in the senior center in the town of Wilmington. Maple Meadows, uh, we, we've uh, um, we've, we've figured out a way to uh, uh, be in a position to help clear the title, so that, that's gonna. We are, uh, we are resolute in pursuing that opportunity, um, because we think that we're the best people to do it, and if we don't, I don't, you know. I'll slide it right there, so anyways, that in a big picture is, is, are the main categories and the, and the goals that the general manager office has, has got targeted. We've done no motion right now, but I would love to have feedback from you guys, you know, sometime between now and, and the end of February, um, and, you know, looks great. What about this, don't do that, whatever, so, um. We apparently have agreed in our contract that within thirty days we need to close this off, so I read about that today. Anyways, it's appropriate to put it in front of you guys, but I want you guys to know where we're trying to head, because I look to you guys for, you know, providing guardrails and, and feedback, any feedback right now?
Yeah, the only thing I gotta mention, if you go for bonding, that's gotta go in front of Reading County.
Exactly, that's part of the process, so that's, that's, and, well, that's exactly why we need to be working on that now. Gotta get done now, because that's not a trivial, that's, that's, there's a lot to that, so that's why it's on there. It's not just a little thing to take care of, it's, it's not trivial, alright.
Will you please explain the winter, winter rise incentive, so what, what is that, can you define that better for me?
Sure, so right now, um, we basically have a program where we, as part of the audit program that's been in place for a while, they make recommendations in terms of air sealing and insulation. Um, there, but they make a lot of other recommendations, but what we basically have done as a pilot or as a test program. Is for those customers that are applying for AirSource heat pumps, we also give them the option to do um, or to have some additional funds for weatherization. It's up to, it's fifty percent of the incentives up to twenty-five hundred, that's the way it's currently figured. Um, it's got good legs, it makes a lot of sense, um, customers should be doing it anyways. So there's a question in terms of, so we're looking at that, but right now it's uh, we put it in place back in June of last year. Um, we'll report back, we should probably, in terms of, I just got that action to, to uh, the, all the incentive programs. Um, so that's what that's all about, but it's basically um, uh, insulation primarily and air sealing currently. And then, some people would put the AirSource heat pump rebate, which we've had in place for quite, you know, for four years now. They would put that into the same category of weatherization, but we segregate it out, it's, it's, it's broader than that, makes sense?
The select new A M I vendor section, um.
Yep, yeah.
So you don't have one right now, so you have to select one, you don't mean a new one, you mean you have to.
Well, when I say, so, no, no, we actually, so we have an A M I vendor, so we, so, so we have two meter platforms right now. And one is an A M I system, but it's limited to three thousand meters, and then the other twenty-nine thousand meters are really an A M R. Which is an automated meter reading system. And so, at the end of the day, our goal, and that A M R um is approaching its thirteenth year. Typical life of them is less than fifteen years, so it's the right time to do the replacement. Um, so we have put together a pretty comprehensive, this is gonna be like an eight or nine million dollar investment, which is again in the budget. Um, but we, we have to walk through a, we want to, not just have to, we wanna walk through a formal bid process, so. We've been working for the past, I don't know, six months, putting together a bid package, which is actually gonna go out. Um, next week, if it didn't go out yesterday, it's gonna go out next week, um, and by summertime, we will have selected who that A M I vendor is.
So, for the people at home, is A M I one step closer or the final step to when they can have the app and read their own electric usage on their phone?
So, um, I thought you were asking a different question, so. It, it is the final step that allows us to implement time of use much more broadly. In addition, so that's, that's, that's built into, that's awesome. And in addition, the capabilities that allow us to do that will also allow us to do the app development. Um, so, to answer your question, the two are set, so it's a, so in terms of time of use, it is the final step. In terms of the mobile app and that type of stuff, um, it's, it's the foundational platform, so we, we're, you know. We've got, we've got a design and a design, we've got specifications in terms of the mobile app. Uh, so that, that will be one of the things that we try and accelerate so the two come together, we are a massive believer in the mobile, mobile app.
Yeah, and other parts of the country are using it already for a while.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Driving habits, I would think.
So we did, a year ago, we did a lot of research on who was using mobile apps, and so um Florida actually has one of the best systems, and they actually license it, so we actually just might license this, we don't wanna develop our own, but. Uh, and, and they provide a lot of education in terms of how to think about a mobile app, et cetera, so, um, they have one, um, and then uh, not Dominion, but uh, who's the fellow? Anyways, there's two or three on the East Coast, it's not that broad, that mobile apps, um. F P L's probably got, it's by far the best than the other ones we've seen around, uh, in terms of, of what we call a real mobile app, it's upcoming. Anyways, the answer to your question, yeah, and we are, we are, this office is passionate about that mobile app, it will get done.
Can't wait. You're familiar with smart gold structure?
Which?
Smart golds, more specific measurable, tangible, realistic type of, um, we can talk more about it, but I'd love in some of these areas to be a little bit more measurable. Um, so where we have things like recruit new large customers, you want one, do you want ten, do you want a hundred? Um, where you have things like broaden or expand, just putting out a specific target against that.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a, I'm an engineer and I love data, so I um am more than happy to put very specific targets. Around things that we have the ability to control.
Sure.
So we will be very aggressive in terms of recruiting customers, but I won't put a target on it, because it's, I have, you know, I can't.
Maybe think about it differently than what are the, what are the measurable activities that you will, uh, actions that you will take to recruit?
Cool, yes. Yeah, we can talk about that, yeah.
Now, but just thinking about it in terms of that, I think both are.
This could be that.
The organization as a whole, um, and then the last thing, I, I know these are full-year goals, but there may be milestones.
Okay. Really, I, um, our internal goals are far beyond this, so. We, we, we push ourselves, we, I mean, this organization knows that, that there is heat in this place to get stuff done. And so, I, I mean, I'll, you know, and, and again, at the end of the day, you, we have a really good. There's a lot of communication that goes back and forth in terms of what we're trying to do, but this is the utility world, and. Bob will know that, you know, we're gonna push hard, but, you know, we're about to enter, for example, um, the reason why I'm pushing so aggressively now on this carbon capture fuel cell. Um, and that we probably will, I'll talk about this in the GM update, sorry, I'm ahead of the film, shall we jump to the next topic, so?
One, one more, um, one thing at the end of the day, how, how much money we make, right? How much money did Reading Light make, you know, year over year, are we going up, are we going down? A lot of things in that list are cost causers, right, data is expensive. Apps are expensive, there's a balance between analytics, um, there's a balance between how much. How, I can buy the best, but at what cost, right, so I think it's, what's very important is to have what our rate of return is, and I, I know you do, we do a report every year, we do a great report. But part of your job always has to be, what's that number, and your job is, some of the things come off, some of these things come on. Based on, on that number and what you wanna go, you know, okay, you know, if, if we think we're, we're doing great, everybody goes up. Headcount goes up, but if we're going the other way, your job is to go down, so I think it's important for you to put a number in there. That says, this is what um my target is, and, and manage to that target, and meaning. If something has to go up, because that, that number is not being achieved, then that's when you have to execute. And, 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 and change something, you know, a lot of this stuff is great, I'd love to see it all, but I don't think quite frankly we can afford all of it, so, um.
Well, everything on there is, so I hear you, right, and, and, and this is a, this environment's a, I come from the private sector where metrics, like. You've, you achieve metrics, right, and not that we don't achieve metrics here, but your compensation's tied to metrics. Um, and you'd make decisions, at the end of the day, decisions are made by the incentive structure of the leader in charge. So we can talk about that in another discussion, for me right now, my goal is, you know, is to fulfill a mission, right? This is, this is my roadmap in terms of fulfilling the mission, right? And so we can talk about all sorts of stuff in terms of adages, so I, I'm here you a hundred percent.
Mission with the bottom line.
It, it, well, at the end of the day, that you understand how the economics work, right, and, and, you know, so we set the rates, right? Um, we set the budget, um, we set a target somewhere between five and eight percent, um, but the big variable is in power supply. And why, and we do a, we have a really good job of managing power supply, we, I mean, honestly, we do. And um, so we can look at the, we can look at the other thirty percent of this, and not that I don't look at it, right, because, you know, there are a lot of things that come up that we're not gonna do, and, you know. And tons of things that are great ideas, but the stuff that you see here, so I, I, I hear the feedback clearly, and I will think about ways, again, to quantify. Um, I will. Our time horizon is, is literally twenty thirties and twenty forties, not twenty twenty-four, so I hear you. Right, and, and the, and the metric that I'm looking at is, you know, our rates, right, are we in the middle of all the MLPs, and are we less than the IOUs? Um, you know, whether it's, whether it's five point six percent or five point eight percent, I, I, that's just not, it's, that's not, this is not that kind of business where you can manage it. Um, so I'll think about what appropriate metrics, metrics are, uh, and that's good feedback, so the smart and the other pieces, but, but literally. You've got, and, and so we'll, we'll do, I'll do a little more detail on it, good feedback, okay, still, I'm gonna do it.
Yes, twenty questions, Greg, um, you've gotta refresh my memory, under your contract, we have to review at some point, do you remember when, I don't remember when that, what, what point that is?
First part of the year, we didn't specify a date, so at least we need to do it in probably, you know, some, sometime between now and mid-March.
Okay, um, we actually probably need to do it by the end of February.
Great, fine.
Because uh, one of the members of this commission is not running for reelection, so I don't think it's fair to ask a, a new person to come in and do that evaluation.
And let's plan to do an executive session on the twenty-eighth meeting. Or however, whatever we do, we'll do a performance review, I guess that's not exactly, we'll do a performance review in the public session on the twenty eighth, no problem.
We'll work it out, we'll work it out.
Good reminder.
I think we also, uh, as a group, uh sagely, uh, built in the, the raises, and, and the small bonus each year. There was a, a whole big rigmarole we wouldn't have to go through.
It's a performance review.
I mean, yeah, it is a performance review, it's necessary.
We did talk about January, so that it was done and done.
We did, so it's all in place, yeah, so the financials are in place.
The types of things we've discussed, like the goals and some of the things Pam's talking about of get some of these metrics in place is kind of what, what, what keeps everything on track and. I don't know if I'm making sense, I'm a little tired, but, you know, I think it's more like this ongoing process than like. We used to do it like it'd be this big thing once a year, just generate forms we'd fill out, and it was kind of like, I think we all agreed it was a little cumbersome. Maybe not as effective for anybody, including the general manager, like.
That's part of the reason also why I'm, I'm trying to look at that three sixty-degree feedback, when you guys see me, you know, once a month and in, in between, these guys see me every day. And so that feedback's helpful to me too, right?
Yeah.
So, so I think your, your point's well taken, so the performance review, we have a commitment, um, but it's not. There are no financial, there are no financial implications, well, I mean, you could terminate me, but there's no financial implication, like, it's not like it's, you know, two percent or one percent or five percent or a hundred percent, or whatever it is, it's just. So we set that aside and, you know, get the job done, Greg, is, and so now the question is, are you getting the job done or not, and the feedback will be warmly welcomed. Makes sense?
Or at least welcome, may not be warmly welcomed.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not, that was meant to be, that was meant to be presumptive, no, seriously, I appreciate the feedback, okay, next slide, please. The other guy. Okay, quick general manager update, because, um, so, uh, thank you. So, um. So, um. Always start with the team. Um, so the new director of operations, uh, kind of. I don't know if I technically can say it, anyways, we have a new director of operations, great guy, we sent a press release, he's off to a running start. Was the picture a mugshot?
It was like a mugshot.
He's a great guy.
Harry Connick's alley.
Small point, just I, I added the, you know, the detail, so. Um, I put this in purposely, but we're adding an additional billing specialist, um, partially to prepare for transitions in several years. Um, but also for the AMI, because when the AMI, so we have to. That transition has, it's more than just putting meters in the field, it has a lot of implications internally as well, so kind of getting ready for that. Um, obviously, we filled the director of operations I mentioned a moment ago, um, we've. Candidates we're looking for in terms of the director of engineering, um, I currently am the acting director of engineering that's working out okay, but I can. I'm, I'm working hard to fill that position. You guys know from earlier discussions from me directly, I'm filling in the director of HR, a lot of good candidates. And then this enterprise data, this goes back to your comment, Bob, that, you know, some of these positions we push off, so I kept pushing this one off a bit on the data side. I still need it, but it'll be later on, so I'm already making those kind of decisions. Um, obviously, January, you guys were well aware, a little more stormy than it's been lately, um, so we had a couple of extended January storms. All said and done, uh, the team worked very diligently, um, now restorations were very quick. Um, one of the things, though, that we're working from the engineering perspective is, you know. And from vegetation management more specifically, um, is how do we minimize the outage, you're not gonna zero them out, but. It's great to be fast and we wanna always be fast, but you know, what things can we do to reduce them? I mentioned before that the unit contracts expired into December, so we're working on those. Um, and then in some of the earlier discussions, I was trying to get an employee survey done, um, late last year, early this year. I'm gonna fill the HR position before I do that, so the morale continues to be good, um, but I still want that ongoing feedback. Um, communications, Arlena, um, so one of the things we're gonna do, um, is put a, I'll call it. Public facing outage map, so outage maps, um, we've been cautious on these because of our architecture of our IT system, um. We want to make sure we don't inadvertently expose, um, any IT, any, any openings for cybersecurity, so be very careful how we're doing this, but we're gonna. By mid-year, before we get to the summer thunderstorms, we'll have the outage maps in play, that'll be very helpful for customers. You know, just an easy way, whether it's the mobile app ultimately, but at least on the website to be able to see what's going on. Um, you know, Julie and I have been working on these current insights, I think we talked about them back in the October, November meetings, um. We've been doing, so it's twice a month, um, we record them back to back, um. But, uh, they're getting, they've got legs, right, and and one of them has almost seven hundred views. Johnny, Johnny, Johnny DeWong, yeah, so. Um, so anyways, that's coming together, and then we also have Zoom capability which allow us to broaden the guests as opposed to having somebody actually have to come here, so. Uh, next week, we're gonna do a Zoom one and also broaden the audience, so we just, it's another mechanism of trying to get communications out.
Um, a resident keeps asking me what happened to the R M O D current that used to come in the envelope monthly with the bill.
The insert.
I didn't understand that they come out of North Carolina, I just learned recently, so adding an insert is not an option?
No.
Or could we have, um, QR code on the bill that says zap this? So now we capture your email and we can communicate your.
I think that latter is a good idea.
But I think some people just liked opening it and reading it right.
Yeah, no, and 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 there's a lot that do that, there's also, I don't have the exact number, we have a lot of, um. Um, auto pay electronic bill. Um, that never, you know, lights are on, everybody's happy, so the point being, we want to, we want, again, the bottom line message. When it continued to increase, so we're, we're doing, so that's a great suggestion, I think the QR one on the bill is a great idea, so we can do that probably pretty quickly. Um, so, and Bob looked into that, that's gonna be a good one. Uh, we send roughly about, so we have roughly thirty two thousand meters, um. Our email list is about twenty thousand, and you know, fun fact that Julie shared with me. We have a sixty three percent open rate, so, um. People, you know, I don't know how much they read them, we try and keep them short and sweet, just easy to follow, but that's pretty darn good, so we're gonna really see if we can't. Get more punch out of that. Um, you know, a year and a half ago, we restarted our Facebook presence, um, so it's got, it's got presence. Um, between that and Twitter or ex former known as Twitter, you know, two to three posts per, per week, so again, just. You know, not constant, but just updates. Um, we have our quarterly webinars, um, we're trying to decide the next quarterly webinar topic as we speak, um, but that typically has about a hundred and fifty participants. And then there's, you know, subsequent reviews, you know, two to two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty, so. That quarterly webinars are actually pretty good and they're meaty too, you know, there's, there's stuff to them. Um, the other element is that picture on the lower left, um, so we have a home energy evaluation kit at all, at, at all four libraries now, it's a, there's two, actually two kits at each one. It has some temperature meter, it has some basic instrumentation type stuff that you can do some measurements and it's got some. You know, some basic samples of stuff and we've arranged with the local, um, hardware store that if they, they wanna buy more stuff, they can get it at a discount, so. Just trying to, again, continue elements in terms of home energy evaluation, so a lot of stuff we're trying to do on a communication and then, you know, we're pretty visible. Um, at the various meetings, et cetera, so all good stuff. Last piece, so, um. It, it's not significant right now, but it's going to be significant, um, in a couple of years. And so we've been, I think I've updated you over the, and we've been working on this for the past two years. Um, it's a group of us MLPs that understand the massive change that's gonna happen in the transmission network. And so we've basically gotten together and we're gonna do it under an ENET piece, but anyways. The regional transmission network is, it's got just an order of magnitude, it's, uh, the value of it right now is about twelve billion dollars. And in order to accommodate the offshore wind and the more distributed, um, solar and. Well, those are the two big pieces, and then, you know, importing stuff from, uh, from Canada. There's already planned an incremental twenty billion dollars of investment, these are massive numbers. And all of the rate payers around the region are gonna be paying for that twenty billion dollars plus the ongoing maintenance of the twelve billion dollars of installed base. And remember the very original slide that, that Bill showed you, right, so nineteen percent of our current cost structure is transmission. And part of it's, you know, it's, we're measured on a monthly basis, and so the stuff we're doing with peak management, battery systems and generators and all that kind of stuff to reduce it. Are all important, we're gonna continue doing that. Um, the Commonwealth and the IOUs for the very first time want the MLP world, which represents about fifteen percent of the total load. Um, in Massachusetts are supplied by R M O D and the rest of the, of the other forty one MLPs, so we're about fifteen percent of the load, so we're small. But we're still, you know, it's not fine. So, um, partially because MLPs universally have a very positive reputation. Um, the Commonwealth and the IOUs want us to be part of this build out because a twenty billion dollar bill is, you know, most people don't like that concept of it's gonna cost me more. So we've basically teaming up as ENET, uh, you know, it's any transmission, that, that, that's just kind of an organizing entity. Um, you know, we're, we're one of more than a dozen in this group, it'll probably grow to be thirty of us by time all is said and done. Um, but the, 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 the opportunity is primarily economic. And again, any one of these projects, we will come to you, you know, and say, we would like to participate in a project, so as opposed to a. Power supply project, it'd be a, a transmission asset project, um, so this is just, you know, more details of what they've kind of been talking about, there's an opportunity. For us to participate as an MLP and our participation would purely be financial. So we would end up basically investing and we would invest realistically given the magnitude, these would be five million or ten million or fifteen million dollar blocks. We would bond for them, going back to the comment that, you know, all this costs money, right? But the transmission assets, um, have a guaranteed rate of return of over eleven percent. Guaranteed. And our cost of capital is in the range of four percent, so. From just a very basic perspective, there's a net seven percent return to the MLPs, so the idea would be, again, don't overdo it. But find projects that have something to do with us or have some related benefit to us, but make that financial investment, again, we don't have anything proposed right now, we're just. Creating the structure so we can do this and we can be in the game, because right now we haven't even been able to be in the game as MLPs and we can't do it just as R M O D would do as a group. It will put a little, you know, small downward pressure on the transmission cost, uh, because our cost of capital is low. Um, but the big, the big benefit is, you know, it might provide an ongoing for twenty years or thirty years or forty years to pay upon the asset. Of a seven percent return on our invested capital net, so it's, it's. Just saying the stage of, again, trying to think out of the box to do unusual things in the context of keeping our bills low, yeah.
That would be, uh, potentially Redding likes to do nuclear baseline. I'm not kidding, you make an investment like this now into, into this type of opportunity. And you're setting yourself up, right, that was the only thing, I didn't know what the duration was, if it's twenty years, thirty years.
Well, it depends upon the, the asset, but, but these assets are like three, three deck, average three deck, you know.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're putting that, that's that bottom bar and, and that's a financial bar, that's, that's just.
It says the bottom bar, it's my, it's just, it comes in constantly, guaranteed.
Guaranteed, guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
You, you're, you're paying out, but at the same time, it wouldn't, everyone pays the bill, you're paying, you're paying yourself.
It's a net seven percent.
Yeah.
Anyways, more details later, but again, I just, you know, trying to keep you guys up to speed, you know. Make sure we take care of the individual, I mean, there's a whole range, range of things we're trying to do, again, we're trying to think out of the box, and so. We, we and one of the other MLPs have been really pushing harder the past two years and, you know, uh, uh, it's now got legs and, you know. We're not gonna drive it, we're gonna drive it as a collective, so it'll be a win all the way around, so anyways. Questions? Yeah, can we do that?
I, I sensing you wrapping up, which is why I sort of jumped in. Um, I wanna go back to Rebecca's comments at the start of this.
Yeah.
Um, she mentioned she was part of the climate action, I think she really meant the Net Zero group, which meant our last night. Cause she's on my climate committee. But, um, you know, she's the Net Zero program, between the Net Zero program and the Killam School. The interest and the exposure by the community to the energy demands of the community. Is far greater at this point in time than it's ever been, so if you haven't heard much about it, or we haven't sold programs, or we haven't talked about programs before. It's maybe because nobody was asking, no one was listening and, and whatever, but now that you have community of programs. Like Killam, like Net Zero, where they're talking about, uh, trying to meet these environmental goals. Rebecca's comment to you today was what we're gonna hear more and more of. What are you doing for us? How are you helping us meet these goals? We're being challenged as a community to have cars and. Heat pumps and stuff, how is our company helping us? So to Bob's comment, there's a significant part of the community that is willing to pay a higher rate, that comment she made about. Green, green, uh, energy or Rex or however that program is named.
Renewable.
Renewable, renewable choice. To Pam's comment, let's sell that, hey, everybody, we got new, new green credits. You know, we're opening up the Renewable Choice Program, anyone who wants to, through what? Extra credit on their bill voluntary. Um, there's an opportunity to sell those additional credits we just funded, not just have it all drive to the bottom line on the rate. So there's a marketing opportunity, there's a, there's a pat on the back opportunity and, and there's a messaging opportunity that. Um, as we are pushing electric power into the community, that we're pushing green electric power into the community.
We're doing that, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're doing it, but the, my point, Greg, is are we getting the message out and is the community responding in a way such they're signing up to the programs that we have? Um, that's not creating a new program, that's just saying, hey, we just bought a whole lot of green credits, they're up for sale, anyone who wants to voluntary participate. Type of use, let's, I mean, we're upgrading all our meters, so let's.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're.
We're evolving that.
Quite as ready yet, but we will, cause, you know, and.
But, you know, again, the feedback is, we're upgrading meters, uh, we're, we're gonna be expanding that program, so, so there's opportunities for feedback on, on both of her comments.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, um, that, those messages are gonna be coming louder and more involved this, as the, that goes out. Um, because looking at the greenhouse gas inventory. Um, and, and Greg knows this because he's done the projections, it's gonna be heat pumps in cars. Um, and that's how we reduce the town greenhouse footprint, because that's really all we are, we're a bedroom community, there isn't, there's a whole lot else. So, um, uh, for both of those goals to come together, for us meet the demand and, and those people to evolve from. fossil fuel to electric, um, the more we can, the things that we do to help them meet their goals, we need to promote. Um, and, uh, I look forward to working with you guys.
Yeah. Thank you, Ray.
One thing to add to that, maybe, just that, uh, I, I think there's a role for the community to promote them too, because I know the department has, has been promoting. And I've been one who's saying, hey, why aren't we doing more to promote, but they do, I remember the time use meter used to be promoted on the, on the cover of the bill. The actual envelope said, hey, time of use meter, call this number, and still, we're stuck at a couple of percent. So it's really not, I, I don't think it's a lack, it, it's not for a lack of departmental effort, these things are out there, they're promoted, but there's only so much they can do. And I think what I mean is, is to say, it's not like we can't do more, but there's a role for the community to, to promote what R M L D is offering themselves. And, and get and bring in the customers and bring in those interests to us.
Yeah.
Coca-Cola spends billions of dollars every year to sell Coca-Cola. Everyone knows what Coca-Cola is, they can recognize a can or bottle. Still, it's a, it's a constant thing.
It's constant, yeah.
And, uh, the problem, the communication strategy.
Yeah. No, but, yeah, and, and the takeaway, um, Ray and, and Dave, you know, and this goes back to some of the other thoughts, you know. We're open, like, we're trying to explore new avenues, like, again, also, we're just trying lots of new stuff. The QR code, and, and again, but you guys see things too, because if we think we, we try and get out of the box to look at stuff. But, you know, things that, oh, yeah, I saw this, you know, don't forget about it, so feel free to, I mean, not only in the meetings, but hey. I saw this interesting way of communication, I saw this interesting piece, I mean, you guys know how to reach me. Um, you know, one nice thing about this organization is that, you know, we're big enough to have resources to be able to try things and get things done. But we're still small enough to be nimble and that, you know, and we say that literally to every, every potential vendor, every, you know, the power supply, everybody like. You know, you wanna try something, come try with us, right, we, you know, we're a great sandbox to play in, um, and, and we'll try stuff now. We're trying to figure out how to, how to make all this stuff work faster and we're really open minded, um, so I think we do a good job, but there's, you know, we gotta keep. Gotta keep pushing on it, so, and that's what we'll do, so I think the takeaway is, um, yeah, you know, you can't do it enough, right? Communication, 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 and, you know, we're better, but we gotta do more and, uh. Again, ideas you guys come across, so the QR, that's great, and, uh, anything else, open, open ears. That's it for me.
Anything else? Okay, I just wanna give a quick, uh, update on the charter commission. Um, basically in the charter commission, uh, Greg, we have, we had two meetings since our last meeting. Greg attended the first meeting and made some administrative, uh, recommendations on one of the paragraphs. Uh, at our last meeting, which was last Monday, uh, the, there was a representative from Reading Town Council, the town council. Uh, who came to appear, there's as many questions about some of the things that they wanted to change, whether they have to. And what, you know, if they do this, do they have to go to the special legislation and so forth on that, so. One of the things, unfortunately, the, uh, when, there are things in the charter that go beyond chapter one sixty four. Um, and so we raised the issue was, you know, you know, is that legal to do that? Um, unfortunately, the, the town council was not prepared to answer that question. He had not seen our legal, our legal, uh, breach at this point, the white paper or whatever, he had not been, they're not been shared with him. So, um, we did agree that, uh, he, he would, we would share some of our legal opinions with him. And so he could come back and, and let us know whether it's even legal, you know, or even enforceable, what's in the chart. Um, because there are many things in the charter, we, we just don't follow. It'd be quite true, we don't follow the chart, we follow one sixty four, sixty four, yeah, we follow one sixty four, so. And even there are things in the charter that are, are so outmoded that it's ridiculous, you know, because this has changed over the years at this point, so. I've talked to general manager about getting, uh, the legal, the legal, uh, opinions out at this point.
Process.
Uh, there is some concern about the, one of the old legal firms and some of the, the, the information that happened during the ills, so we, uh.
We have a plan B.
We have a plan B as to how to deal with that. All right, I'd be glad to talk to anybody offline, it's the, what those, what those issues are, okay? All right, other than that, we just got the warrant schedule. Anybody having any issues with that? Marlene is in after, after she's gone. Yeah, so we'll have to adjust that.
Uh, tomorrow night, you get me back, I'm gonna do the cab coverage.
Okay.
Great.
Then I'll cover, uh, the March.
Okay. Sounds good.
February one and March twenty one.
Yeah.
Yeah, January, March on the table, yep.
So I got the, I got the February one.
Yeah.
You got February 20.
Yeah, I got February 22nd. It was already in my calendar at the office, okay? Uh, we have no executive session scheduled, so I entertain motion to adjourn if anybody, if somebody wants to make it.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is that second?
Second.
Second, got everybody second. All those in favor, raise your hand, oppose that motion, carry, we adjourned.
Thank you.